I'm Maury Pete's King, serving Rockville since 1972. Dine in, carry out, or drive up window. Come and see us. Thank you, Rockville, for 50 years of business.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. As we begin our meeting, we ask that you would guide and direct us to make the right choices for the town and its residents and to help keep people happy and keep them at peace in this time of year. We ask that you would remind us why we celebrate Christmas and just keep us all together and guide and direct us and keep us safe. Watch over the utility department and our police department and fire department as they get in some pretty difficult predicaments sometimes. We ask in your name, amen.
We got the meeting minutes from November 18th, December 2nd, and the 10th. If you all would see copies of...
I make the motion we accept the minutes of the three meetings as presented.
Second. One favor.
Yes, I did go in my own place first. I thought, "My goodness."
Buddy, you need to remind us.
I have to. Okay, let's go on. Claims warrants end of the month, $76,679.94 for this meeting.
That's $476.48.
Excuse me, thank you.
Yes, $476.48.
Let's see. Payroll warrants, $11.25, $12.21, $12.16, the amount is $43,649.95. Bank reconciliations, utilities, $2,551,236.62. Payroll, $2,618.4. And customer depreciation, $33,365. And the motion to approve all of those?
I make the motion.
Thank you. One favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Come on, look at there. You have any skin?
Okay, Jim. Good to see ya.
Good to see you guys.
All the reservation stuff like that. Go around the room. Derek?
Good. Under 94 runs for the year to date, probably over the past 200. We received a letter today for our ISO inspection that was rescheduled from last year. Looks like it's going to be late January. We can get a checklist. I think it says it's an electronic checklist that we can kind of follow to set ourselves up for success on that. Probably with the town, some water numbers and all that. But once we get the checklist, we'll figure that out. We postponed our last meeting, which was supposed to have been for elections. It's going to be held next week, so we'll put those names and numbers to you next week. Don't foresee a whole lot changing, but never know. Appreciate everything all year long, so hopefully next year continues to sing. Thank you all very much.
194.
194, thank you.
Oh. Chili Cook Off, February 19th, under the community center. That's about it for part four. In the meeting, I left you, Jenny, a list of trainings, classes, the utility guys that they do. I don't know if they can pick up anything from any of them, but it's free. At the university, they want to do it. You, I don't believe it, but I don't know whether they've ever done that in the past.
They have. They sent emails, but it seems like it's always on the bay. It's not...
Yeah, it is for us.
It's like craziness lately.
Well, things you'll get, a picture taken and a free meal.
Yeah.
What time is your chili cook off?
Our chili cook off, five tomorrow. And I think that's all I've got on my shoulders. Thank you, Mr. Barville.
Thank you all your help this week.
You're welcome.
Brad.
Well, I've got something for the maintenance on the generators. Been taking a while to get ahold of somebody, but we finally got all of the Cummins. And you guys have all got a quote, it's a five-year plan. And I did get a phone call today. It's Snow White. They will be here tomorrow morning to pump out that tank, unless they cancel again for a third time. And Anthony and Brad are scheduled January 3rd for their driving test. That's all I got.
Just a quote on the January 3rd, the only one you received.
Yeah, I just can't get hold of anyone else.
Yeah.
A lot of places you called, they didn't do this.
They did.
Who is it that uses these guys?
RMC.
It looks like on the page number, but it's... Well, they do come and change all the...
Right.
Go down the road.
Probably.
That's great.
So is this a vote on the total agreement or by year or for the...
Congratulation.
Was that five years?
Five years.
That's $4,000 something. $4,256 a year?
Yeah.
Jane, we're just using Mike Brown here to take, show the song "Are You Boozes" in here. He's been doing us a fabulous job.
And he's local.
Pretty well vocal, so might be somebody else thinking about it.
Yeah.
No, they didn't run that on that. For bodies.
Yeah.
Does he do generators and...
I don't know. I think a lot of...
They called several places locally. One guy locally that's an electrician doesn't have his certifications and licenses to do it.
Jason Ali.
They are working on it.
When does it expire? Here it is.
It expires in February 12th, so it's the closest.
You want to try it someplace else?
Do you at least want to try Mike Brown? If he wants to try Mike Brown and see maybe...
You're going to get ahold of him.
Because this quote says it's good till February 12th, so...
We got a hard...
Yeah.
Six to decide if anyone else has gave us a quote.
Yeah.
And just make sure they got their certification to do these people well, but not just because they can constantly change the oil. We can do it ourselves.
Triple six.
I don't know.
In the meantime, we can go year to year, because it does say on there payment type page to go, so you only pay if each service is fulfilled.
Okay.
Look it over and see if any time we can...
Oh, yeah.
Did he tell you that or not?
Oh, I see. Payment type page to go.
Here, the payment on here, opt out of automatic and then it won't be.
We'll get one more. And then talk to someone else.
So you'll put that off?
Okay.
John, you're up.
I don't think I have any new updates other than what I sent you via email last week or whatever, but just want to take the time to thank you guys for your cooperation. I really appreciate it. Make my job a lot easier and made it through the whole year and kept her safe, no injuries.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Brad, for all your...
I got another thing, too. The part of the weekend, the wellhouse, it took a hit without their grounding, so...
Great.
Wonderful.
I thought about that the other night.
That was really good.
Yeah.
Did you get calls about that transformer on Poplar in East Street?
I think we've been called in every night this week.
What is going on?
Every weekend and every night this week.
What's going on with that?
Just tree limbs falling down and hitting the line.
Can we get some trees cut down there away from it?
Hopefully we can. Hopefully PPS can come back in town.
Is it on the town or is it on the...
It's on us.
It's on the town, so we need to get those trees cut away from there then.
Just the wind's been so crazy lately. All the other times were fine, but these last five, six days, it's been bad.
Okay. Maybe we should really look into that.
Yeah.
Has it just been up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up there behind delps was, we were up there...
That's underground.
Four times?
No, the, and behind Drake's.
It's that same one?
Torres, Boulderman's, out, barn, all the area.
It's that same one they had trouble with before?
Well, thanks again to the guys, thanks for all the contribution. Jimmy, good seeing you, bud.
Nothing for me until the camera's not on.
It's good to see you there.
It's good to be here.
Yeah. All right, let's go to the resolutions. Just passing through.
I just passed them through.
Okay, we got...
Didn't get that double.
I see one.
I'm assuming he's going out. I'm just looking for a secretary.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
We got resolutions and ordinances.
Yes. Okay. Resolution 2021-12-1. That is to clarify the compensation for the town marshal and so forth.
I make the motion we accept resolution 2021-12-1.
Second. One favor. Thank you.
You're welcome. It doesn't matter.
And we got the resolution.
Hang on. Yeah, final.
There's a sign that's on there.
Do you have that one?
Yeah. Got some special things. You're up. Okay, then we got the resolution 2021-12-2, which is a transfer of funds to make everything come out with for the end of the year.
I make the motion.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Should have hoped, man. I'm hoping so.
You did it all, you know, the channel.
No, exactly.
Okay.
Oh, wait, is there another one in there?
No. Okay. Now we've got the ordinance 2021-12-01, which is ordinance fixing compensation for the town council members, housekeeping marshal, all out of the, for the expenses that come from.
Do you want separate? Everyone can... Separate. No, everyone can go on this one. I make the motion to accept ordinance number 2021-12-01. Second?
One favor. Thank you.
Everyone's on that. I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Should I stand up?
Yes.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
You come up there?
Yes.
Okay. Now we've got the ordinance 2021-12-02, which is the salary ordinance for the foot crazer office manager. Do you have to change this one over?
I make a motion to pass the ordinance 2021-12-02.
Second?
One favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Staying third?
Yeah.
Did you send that one?
I sent that one.
That's this one.
Okay, and then we've got 2021, ordinance salary ordinance 2021-12-03, which is the, for the temporary part time.
Quick. Quick.
Seven.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Stan.
Yes, that's going to go wrong.
Yes. Okay. New lockbox was opened at First Financial Bank in Rockville, and Kathy makes a suggestion to add Tasha to the signatory for the lockbox. She's on the bank account, so...
I make a motion.
Yeah, it needs to be in the minutes. I'll just go on our bank accounts. I'd just like to make an official...
I have trouble.
I make a motion to add Tasha to the lockbox.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Me too, anyways.
We got one water sewer adjustment, number eight, 155.04, 1204, 1204, and Christina Smith.
I make the motion we allow this water sewer adjustment per ordinance.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, on, in your packages, a list of all the 2022 reading dates, disconnect dates, holidays. Second favor, the calendar with everything circled for our information.
I make a motion that way for the meter reading and disconnect and holiday dates for 2022.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay, real development statement and budget income and equity cash flow for approval. I make a motion to...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
You got a ticket, Kathy?
No.
Go down the road.
Probably.
That's great.
So is this a vote on the total agreement or by year or for the...
Congratulation.
Was that five years?
Five years.
Yeah. That's $4,000 something. $4,256 a year?
Yeah.
Jane, we're just using Mike Brown here to take, show the song "Are You Boozes" in here, and he's been doing us a fabulous job.
And he's local.
Pretty well vocal, so might be somebody else thinking about it.
Yeah.
No, they didn't run that on that. For bodies.
Yeah.
Does he do generators and...
I don't know.
I don't think a lot of... They called, they called several places locally. One guy locally that's an electrician doesn't have his certifications and licenses to do it.
Yeah, Jason Ali.
They are working on it.
When does it expire?
It expires in February 12th, so it's the closest.
You want to try it someplace else?
Do you at least want to try Mike Brown? If he wants to try Mike Brown and see maybe...
You're going to get ahold of him. You're going to give him a call.
Because this quote says it's good till February 12th, so...
We got a hard...
Yeah.
Six to decide if anyone else has gave us a quote.
Yeah.
And just make sure they got their certification to do these people well, but not just because they can constantly change the oil. We can do it without ourselves.
Triple six. Just got to...
In the meantime, we can see if we can go year to year, because it does say on there payment type page to go, so you only pay if each service is fulfilled.
Okay.
Look it over and see if any time we can...
Oh, yeah.
Did he tell you that or not?
Oh, I see. Payment type page to go.
Here, the payment on here, opt out of automatic and then it won't be. Do you want to get that?
We'll get one more. And then talk to someone else.
So you'll put that off?
Okay.
No, John, you're, you're up.
I don't think I have any new updates other than what I sent you via email last week or whatever, but just want to take the time to thank you guys for your cooperation. I really appreciate it. Make my job a lot easier and made it through the whole year and kept her safe, no injuries.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Brad, for all your...
I got another thing, too. The part of the weekend, the wellhouse, it took a hit without their grounding, so...
Great.
Wonderful.
I thought about that the other night.
That was really good.
Yeah.
Did you get calls about that transformer on Poplar in East Street?
I think we've been called in every night this week.
What is going on?
Every weekend and every night this week.
What's going on with that?
Just tree limbs falling down and hitting the line.
Can we get some trees cut down there away from it?
Hopefully we can. Hopefully PPS can come back in town.
Is it on the town or is it on the...
It's on us.
It's on the town, so we need to get those trees cut away from there then.
Just the wind's been so crazy lately. All the other times were fine, but these last five, six days, it's been bad.
Okay. Well, maybe we should really look into that.
Yeah.
Has it just been up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up there behind delps was, we were up there...
That's underground.
Four times?
No, the, and behind Drake's.
It's that same one?
Torres, Boulderman's, out, barn, all the area.
It's that same one they had trouble with before?
Well, thanks again to the guys, thanks for all the contribution. Jimmy, good seeing you, bud.
Nothing for me until the camera's not on.
It's good to see you there.
It's good to be here.
Yeah. All right, let's go to the resolutions. Just passing through.
I just passed them through.
Okay, we got...
Didn't get that double.
I'm assuming he's going out. I'm just looking for a secretary.
Okay. We got some good better...
What's that one?
Are you right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We got resolutions and ordinances.
Yes. Okay. Resolution 2021-12-12-1. That is to clarify the compensation for the town marshal and so forth.
I make the motion we accept resolution 2021-12-1.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It doesn't matter.
And we got the resolution.
Hang on. Yeah, final.
There's a sign that's on there.
Do you have that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we got the resolution 2021-12-2, which is a transfer of funds to make everything come out with for the end of the year.
I make the motion.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Should have hoped, man. I'm hoping so.
You did it all, you know, the channel.
No, exactly. There you go. Oh, wait, is there another one in there?
No.
Okay. Now we've got the ordinance 2021-12-01, which is ordinance fixing compensation for the town council members, housekeeping marshal, all out of the, for the expenses that come from.
Do you want separate? Everyone can... Separate. No, everyone can go on this one.
Oh.
I make the motion to accept ordinance number 2021-12-01.
Second?
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Everyone's on that. No, I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Should I stand up?
Yes.
Oh, wait, is there another one in there?
No.
Okay. Now we've got the ordinance 2021-12-01, which is ordinance fixing compensation for the town council members, housekeeping marshal, all out of the, for the expenses that come from.
Do you want separate? Everyone can... Separate. No, everyone can go on this one. I make the motion to accept ordinance number 2021-12-01.
Second?
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Everyone's on that. No, I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Should I stand up?
Yes.
Should I stand up?
It's not working.
Okay, the next one is 2021-12-02, which is salary ordinance for the foot crazer office manager. Do you have to change this one over?
I make a motion to pass the ordinance 2021-12-02.
Second?
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Staying third?
Yeah.
Did you send that one?
I sent that one.
That's this one.
Okay, and then we've got 2021, ordinance salary ordinance 2021-12-03, which is the, for the temporary part time.
Quick. Quick.
Seven.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And new lockbox was opened at First Financial Bank in Rockville, and Kathy makes a suggestion to add Tasha to the signatory for the lockbox. She's on the bank account, so...
I make a motion.
Yeah, it needs to be in the minutes. I'll just go on our bank accounts. I'd just like to make an official...
I have trouble.
I make a motion to add Tasha to the lockbox.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Me too, anyways.
We got one water sewer adjustment, number eight, 155.04, 1204, 1204, and Christina Smith.
I make the motion we allow this water sewer adjustment per ordinance.
Second?
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, on, in your packages, a list of all the 2022 reading dates, disconnect dates, holidays. Second favor, the calendar with everything circled for our information.
I make a motion that way for the meter reading and disconnect and holiday dates for 2022.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Okay. Real development statement and budget income and equity cash flow for approval. I make a motion to...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It has to be signed by you, where it says appropriate official.
On that.
Yeah.
All right, we've already discussed the comings before the comings, and we all have to sign, sign the anti-nepotism forms. All council members.
We can do this.
No, we're going to do it again.
We can do this.
The bottom hand.
Yeah. Uh, you know, most of the, your cabinet remains to sign. All necessary invoices to be paid by the end of the month of December, since we want to close everything out.
You got it, and you're, that's the last one for you.
I make a motion that we allow all invoices to be paid for the month of December.
Second. One favor?
Aye. That's it.
Thank you.
I'm putting it down.
John.
Well, I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Well, I thank you.
Doctor. It's been a long time.
Thank you, Jane. I, I have enjoyed serving with everyone. It's been 16 years, and when I stop and think of all the things that were...
Up and down.
That we did in those 16 years, you were on there with me that, that time, and, well, the previous board finally got the, the grant for the community center, remember?
I was on there.
And so we got the community center built, then we got the grant for the sewer system. We redid our water system. We blacktopped our streets. We've had so many upgrades in the parks. We have a new police department, and it's just been Terry's onboard, the cemetery, and we've had a lot of people come and go at the utility department. Holy cow. We probably spent 80% of our time on employee interviews and, and Brad, we, we just hope and pray that you stay here forever, until retirement, okay? You're, you're sitting by a man right there, and there's a man down here that has spent most of their life up there, and, you know, it's a good place to work and good people to work with, and, oh, you get some angry people once in a while, but, you know.
Little devil.
That's the, that's just the way life is, but thank you to everyone and for your support and for listening to me, and I appreciate it, and it's been a real joy, it's been a real sense of accomplishment, and at times it's been on the total opposite end of the spectrum, where very disappointing and very downheartening, but for the most part, when you stop and look at what our little town's done in 16 years, it, it's only because everybody's worked together, and that means a lot. That's the only way it's going to happen, so thank you.
And you are the last elected member of this council.
The last elected member, is that right?
Yes.
Huh.
Yeah, resolutions and ordinances.
Yes. Okay. Resolution two zero two one dash one two dash one. That is to clarify the compensation for the town marshal and so forth.
I make the motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash one.
Okay.
On favor?
On.
You're welcome. It doesn't matter.
And we got the resolution. Okay, then we got the resolution twenty two zero two one dash one two dash two, which is a transfer of funds to make sure everything come out with for the end of the year.
I make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we got the ordinance two zero two one dash one two dash zero one, which is ordinance fixing compensation for the town council members' housekeeping marshal, all out of the, for the expenses that's come from them.
Everyone can...
Separate.
No, everyone can go on this one.
Oh.
Yeah.
I make the motion to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash zero one.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Everyone's on that. I see what you're saying.
Okay, the next one is two zero two one dash one two dash zero two, which is salary ordinance for the foot trader office manager. You have to abstain from this one, though.
I make a motion to pass the ordinance two zero two one one two oh two.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Staying there.
Yeah.
Do we say that one?
Say that one.
That's this one.
Okay, and then we got two zero two one, ordinance salary ordinance two zero two one dash one two dash oh three, which is the, for the temporary part-time clerk.
I make the motion.
Seven.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Stan. Yes, that's going to go along.
Yes.
Okay. The lock box was opened at First Financial Bank in Rockville. And Kathy makes a suggestion to add Tasha to the signatory for the lock box. She's on the bank account, so...
I make a motion that...
Yeah, it needs to be in the minutes. I wish she already owned our bank accounts, I'd just like to make it official.
I make a motion to add Tasha to the lock box.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Me too anyways.
We got one water sewer adjustment, number eight, one five five point oh four, dash oh four, point oh four, yeah, Christina Smith.
I make the motion to allow this water sewer adjustment per ordinance.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Yeah, on, in your package is a list of all the twenty twenty-two reading dates, disconnect dates, holidays. Second favor, the calendar with everything circled for our information.
I make a motion that we approve the meter reading and disconnecting holiday dates for twenty twenty-two.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, real development statement and budget income and equity cash flow for approval. Except that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You got a copy of the copy, Kathy?
It only has to be signed by you, where it says appropriate official. Yeah.
All right, we've already discussed the comings, the full comings. And we all have to send, sign the anti-nepotism forms, all council members. Neither of those, the, the CASA remains to sign. All necessary invoices to be paid by the end of month of December, since we want to close everything out.
You got it, and that's the last one for you.
I make a motion to allow all invoices to be paid for the month of December.
Second. On favor?
Aye. That's it.
Well, I hope you enjoy your retirement.
I thank you.
Doctor, for a long time.
Thank you, Jane. I, I have enjoyed serving with everyone. It's been sixteen years, and when I stop and think of all the things that were...
Up and down.
That we did in those sixteen years, you were on there waiting that time. And, well, the previous board finally got the, the grant for the community center, remember? When I come on. And so we got the community center built, then we got the grant for the sewer system. We redid our water system, we blacktopped our streets, we've had so many upgrades in the parks. We have a new police department, and it's just been Terry's on board with the cemetery. And we've had a lot of people come and go at the utility department, Callis Cal. We've probably spent eighty percent of our time on employee interviews and... And Brad, we, we just hope and pray that you stay here forever, till retirement, okay? You're, you're sitting by a man right there, and there's a man down here that has spent most of their life up there. You know, it's a good place to work and good people to work with, and, oh, you get some angry people once in a while, but, you know.
Little bit of delus.
That's the, that's just the way life is. But thank you to everyone and for your support and for listening to me, and I appreciate it. And it's been a real joy, it's been a real sense of accomplishment. And at times it's been on the total opposite end of the spectrum, where very disappointing and very downheartening. But for the most part, when you stop and look at what our whole town's done in sixteen years, it, it's only because everybody's worked together. And that means a lot, that's the only way it's going to happen, so thank you.
And you are the last elected member of this council.
The last elected member, is that right?
Yes.
Huh, okay.
Everybody else, there's been opening, and we've, somebody stepped in, but you were the last one that was officially elected.
Huh, nobody?
No, I was elected last time, no one run.
Well, yeah, but I mean, when you had to go through the election, that was her.
Oh, when there was.
Yeah, when you had to natural.
You know what I'm saying, huh?
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of disappointing that people in the public don't want to run for town council. It really is, because this is our town, and it's our responsibility to take care of it and do the best we can. And when people call me with a complaint, I'm like, it's okay, you know, that's our job, and that's what we're here for, is to take the complaints and, and try to make it better, so I, I've never gotten upset about people calling or coming to the door to, to tell me their issues, so I thank you. And now, Paul, I thank you for sixteen years of sitting there supporting me, and so now then I get to sit there.
And support, remember.
And support, yes.
And you're going to be getting support too. Yep, right in between.
There's rules back here.
Oh, I see.
That's fair.
Ruck row.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate all of you, me a lot.
Yeah, I just, basically, that's been said, thank everybody, from volunteers and any volunteers in the town that does anything. Not just our fire department and police and that, anybody steps up and tries to help do something instead of complaining.
There's people over at the center right now trying to deliver food to people, you know, and they're volunteering for that, so...
Well, just a part of that.
Well...
They give you gear back sometime, though.
I guess so.
That's what I was trying, are you in there earlier, but I was thinking, oh, God.
I will say to you, oh, thank you so much. Aw.
Maybe it's your turn to cry.
I will.
Thank you, everybody, that was all, I signed it, thank you. Wow, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for putting up with me. Hey, it was, anything, you know, it doesn't matter, we have our differences, it's just... Nothing personal. Pardon me?
There you go.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks.
Kathy?
I honestly don't remember, I think there was something else, but I did bring the deed for Rick Patton and Mr. Potte, but I'll give him the gap of years, we take care of that. Seems like there was something else, but honestly don't seem to remember.
Is this guy still going to make it on the sixth?
Yes, yes, we talked, we know him, so Diane will be, we have the claim credits and the new water tower, but should be getting a new water tower, I think.
Oh.
Well, not anyone, refurb, refurb.
That's awesome.
Guaranteed water tower. So he's going to come, and we're going to, he's going to go back over the scope of work. I actually looked at it again the other day, and, you know, I don't know that there's anything that would come off of that, I don't know if there's anything to be added to it. And I'm going to take these numbers, maybe get Kathy right after the first of the month, to try and see, make sure. The big issue that you're going to have to consider is whether you want to go with a more aggressive payment plan, pay it off a little faster, and a little more aggressively with more upfront payments, or go slow with it. And I, I, I still think that there's a pretty good chance you can do this without a water renewal, so...
All right.
At least, I mean, you will have to appreciate it at some point, it's inevitable, but at least not right away. That's it.
And thank you for all your...
Oh, I, I, all those things are all things that, you know, I go down there and forget about.
Okay.
You don't stay here anymore?
Yeah.
All right, now, wish everybody in here a happy holiday period, safe, and look forward to next year, no matter what it may bring.
Make a most of your journey. I do have one more, sorry. Welcome Paul on for next year. One go now, one go.
No doubt about that. Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you, everybody.